Okay, I'd like to call open a RTM Public Safety Committee meeting at seven oh six. We're gonna start differently because we're gonna go through with the City of Groton, Groton Long Point first. I can get through.
I'm good with this. It can be a curve ball.
Okay, I don't have a figure. Or I just have the total figure for all of City of Groton, so I need a motion.
I can take it if you go to page one, oh, you don't have one seventy-seven in the big book.
Yeah.
Okay.
I want you to use my.
Yeah. Yeah.
One seventy-seven in the big book.
Okay.
And then the detail is in Appendix Alpha.
Hey, guys, sorry about that. I heard you're muting. But I was in the car and I'm calling a police station. I can't be playing on the phone. Doing all at the same time.
Well, you had the book.
One seventy-seven.
Yeah. Two nine five.
The name she go.
We're sending a police.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Otherwise, we just moved a whole figure.
I will move a police figure of ready? Two million nine hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred eighty.
Second.
I'll second.
Sit next to Joe over here. Second to that? Second. Somebody on the committee. Oh, you're on the committee.
That's why I'm here.
Oh, okay. Moderator Russ assigned me when I took over the appointment after Jacome left. Okay. You didn't put your name on the.
Yeah. On the agenda.
Understood.
Jacome wasn't on this committee either.
No, I think he she. Okay, we have a motion in a second. You wanna do a presentation for us?
Sure, man. Thank you, Representatives. Thank you, Chair Perrell, and the representatives for being here tonight. Give us an opportunity. I will read the letter that I sent to Town Manager Bert, and then I will turn it over to the chief. Dear Mr. Bert, attached, please find a copy of the city's police budget for FY twenty twenty-four. The overall police budget for FY twenty twenty-four has increased by three point three percent over last year's budget. The increase is driven by personnel costs and benefits. The city is once again requesting the town of Groton, the customary and traditional payment of fifty percent of the costs associated with providing public safety to our residents. Request of the town is calculated after the costs associated and police chief have been subtracted. FY twenty twenty-four funding request is two million nine hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. We're also attaching for informational purposes a copy of the city's capital improvement plan for FY twenty twenty-four through FY twenty twenty-nine as it relates to the police department. We look forward to meeting with you to discuss the budget, certainly Keith Hendrick.
Mister Chair, if I might interrupt, how many members are here present at this meeting for the RTM right now? One, two, three, five. Okay, so, all right, we're good. I just wanted to check because I think we need five for a forum. I think we four, four, four. I just, well, actually, no, because you're I got a text from moderator Russ saying we had to have five, so I just wanted to make sure we're in order. Thank you. Sorry about that. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Representatives, for allowing me to come and present my budget this year. If I may, I will give you a quick background of the police department. We have been an accredited agency since twenty fifteen. We just received our reaccreditation again the last fiscal year for Level One, a Tier One. We are in the process of getting Tier Two accreditation to move us along farther in the process, which is mandated by the state now. But we've had it since twenty fifteen. We have a twenty-nine member department, twenty-seven officers, and then we have the captain and myself, the chief. Very diverse department from the top down. We have four certified dispatchers, three and a half non-sworn support personnel. We have one traffic officer and one crossing guard. The budget's unique in that we have a fully loaded budget, which allows me to give full disclosure of all costs associated with our department and everything that needs to run the department. That includes salaries, the dispatch center, vehicle cost purchases, fuel costs, training, benefits, retirement, workman's comp, and OPEB, to name a few. Like the mayor says, I do have an increase of three point three percent, which is approximately a hundred ninety-five thousand six hundred and five dollars. But compared to the national inflation rate hovering around six percent, I believe we created a fiscally responsible budget. Our increase is mostly, as the mayor said, is driven by contractual obligations, pensions, expenses, and benefits. To be specific, our biggest increase is under the benefits section. That's up five across, five percent across the board. Approximately ninety-six thousand dollars just for benefits. Salaries went up two point two five percent by contract obligations. Our fuel costs and vehicle maintenance went up six thousand dollars each. That's a total of twelve thousand dollars. And or other minor sources of of the increase were police accountability, bill accreditation requirements, training that we needed here too. If you look, the only item that I requested in an effort to better deter speeding and prevent accidents are four radar speed signs. There are mobile signs that we would put out at different locations for certain periods of time because one of our biggest issues, one of our biggest citizens' complaints is speeding. Obviously, we can't have our officers in every spot available, so these signs will help us deter speed. They will flash when you have, when you're over the speed limit. They'll tell you when you're at the speed limit. What these also will do, they will count all the vehicles that come through. They will count and determine when the speeds are the highest and most frequent, so we can then put our officers at that location and do follow-up enforcement. What other way we attempt to mitigate costs as far as concerning the unfunded man H and training and accreditation is we use our own post-certified instructors. So whenever we do training, we have post-certified instructors that we won't have to pay for instructors to come in. We also use other departments' certified instructors such as the town or Waterford or Ledger. We share training instructors. We also utilize LEC, the Law Enforcement Council, which trains all the officers in this region. And we get grants as much as we can. We have three grants we obtained for twelve cameras that we will put on the streets that will help us alleviate any monitor the traffic at all egress in and out of the city. So if there is an actual event that we need to get everybody out of the city for, such as the bridge incident that we had the other day, not that we had to get them out, but it would help see which locations are backed up and we can divert our traffic from there. So that's the that's the update on our budget at this time. If you have any questions, I'll answer them to the best of my ability.
Okay. Open your discussion. Anybody have any questions? Moderator Russ? Put your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I know this got brought up at the town council, so I'm gonna bring it up here.
You're breaking up. You're very hard to hear.
Can you hear me better? I'm kind of in the middle of nowhere. My question is, this got brought up at the town council meeting. When are you considering bringing on social workers into your department?
I had discussions with the mayor. We have been utilizing mobile outreach and the Connecticut Mental Health Society for the last several years. The calls have increased, and I have had discussions with the mayor to obtain a social worker. We didn't, I didn't put it in the budget this year. We just talked about it, so I plan on trying to get one for next year. That Groton Town, LJ, Chief Pissaro, has offered the use of their social worker if needed. But we have been able to control things with mobile outreach at this time, but due to the increase that we're seeing, we will be needing one in the future.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Representative Thomas?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Chief, and thank you for all that you do in the city and um I am glad to hear about the social worker coming on board next year, being worked into the budget. I think that's a great idea. And I know that there was a much discussion at the town council about the the overall funding for the police as a whole budget item. As another representative did bring up some concerns about how that relationship works. Now, I don't have any particular concerns necessarily about that, but I was wondering if you might want to speak to that at all.
I'm not sure what your question is, sir.
The three million dollars is coming from the town going to into the city. Yes, the that, or the roughly three million. Just, you know, some constituents have asked about that relationship, and, you know, we've got some documents from the town clerk about the relationship between the town and the city, and, you know, we are mandated to, you know, support the roads, but, you know, the police department has been more of a traditional thing. And, you know, I know that the city mayor was in an article recently about you know, talking about how, you know, the city budget was leveled and no increase in there yet. You know, there's a, well, actually, you know, I believe Representative Goethe may be in the room. Maybe I could just recognize her instead and let her speak to it directly. Could I, Chair Perrell, could I cede my time or yield my time to her?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Thomas and Chairman Perrell. I rushed from my own committee meeting. I just finished up. So as Representative Thomas mentioned, I had spoke at the town council budget hearing, particularly about this topic. What concerns me about keeping the city of Groton's police budget, it's the only city budget like departmental budget that we we pay for here in Groton, and it concerns me that when I think of the city and how they voted to be their own borough and take, you know, autonomy and responsibility for how they function, you know, in their little corner of Groton. You know, is it really appropriate for the city to be coming here in front of forty-some odd RTM members, another nine counselors for a budget? And when I think of those in the city and what they wanted for their autonomy in the city, I don't think it's appropriate for this budget to be here. In the same way, it wouldn't be appropriate if we were paying for their Parks and Rec, their Public Works, any of their other kind of city departmental functions. So that's, that's the main drive here. Three million dollars is a lot, especially considering the increases. Has nothing to do with the actual functioning of the police. You know, I'm a very big proponent of your work and your predecessors. Absolutely, I'm not saying that the city doesn't deserve their own police department. Absolutely a great community service. It's just a matter of where should the responsibility for these costs lie? The, the city of Groton, they have their own services. That's what they chose as the voters of the citizens to do. They have the tools to, to pay for it, right? They have the ability to raise their own bill. They have the ability to raise bonds. I think last I checked, you guys had a better bond rating than the town of Groton itself. So there's, there's tools. They have an unassigned fund balance. It's that, you know, a reserve, they both being pretty healthy, which is a great mark to their credit. So just thinking about the responsibility of where these costs should lie, I don't think it belongs here in the town of Groton budget. And I don't think it's fair to city residents to have to go through a bunch of folks like myself who I live in the town, right? Like, I, why am I having any kind of say over their budget at all? I think it should rest solely with Mayor Hedrick, his city council, who is voted by the city residents. That's where I believe the responsibility for this account item should lie, and that three million dollars, I think about what it could do, right? It could either reduce that tax burden on all of our town residents who don't actually have any privilege of this, like you'll respond to my calls in the town, but that's as a mutual aid service like you would to Ledger or Stonington, right? It's not as of right, even though I pay for the service as a town taxpayer with this budget item in my account. I don't have the right to the city of Groton services. I have the privilege of it, thankfully, but not the right. And so that's another issue as well. I don't, I don't have the right to vote for a city councillor who's going to be necessarily privy to those union negotiations that are paid for by this budget. I mean, we don't pay for the chief's salary. I understand that. But we do pay for all of the officers. I don't have a city councillor that I can elect who's going to voice my concerns on those union negotiations, right?
Yeah, the biggest thing is, I correct my wrong. This is not their entire budget. This is only a partial of their budget. What we're paying for for them is that they pay the taxes like everybody else in town of Groton. But they don't get the services of the police department. They have their own police department. So they're asking for the money to subsidize the okay, we're covering their own police department. It's not their entire budget.
They're asking me to subsidize their police department that I don't get privileged of service to. And are you saying that the town of Groton isn't going to respond as a right if, or whatever reason that the city doesn't get the call?
Same idea for me, and I don't have any children, but I pay for school budget.
I think it's a little bit different, right? Because they're choosing to have this additional service the way they have, they are choosing to have the additional Parks and Rec Department, the additional Public Works Department. If the city police department, if they didn't choose to have that, then they would receive the town of Groton services as a right, just the same way that they pay for the Parks and Rec here in town, and they receive those services as they choose to receive them. But for instance, we want to talk about Parks and Rec, think that Shenet, the Eastern Point Beach, right? As a town resident paying a little bit more to go to that, get that beach pass, and as I should, right? Because I don't believe the town pays anything for that. They're choosing to have an additional service of having the Parks and Rec and having the beach maintenance. But if they chose not to take care of that, that would be back to the town, and I wouldn't expect to have another fee added on top of that for using that beach pass.
Not gonna look be, like it is, if, if the town police had to cover the city of Groton, it didn't have a police department, it's gonna cost us a lot more money.
If the city of Groton didn't have its own police department.
It would cost the it would cost the town or money to hire more people to cover the city.
Well.
You know what I mean?
If, if, let's be honest with ourselves, it'd probably level service, right? If it would just be the officers in the town of Groton as opposed to the officers in the city of Groton.
They'd have to hire more officers.
Or officers.
Or or supervisors. More police.
Why is that?
Because it's a larger area. You can't just cover what we have. Now, we have enough officers now that covers our area cover. Now, we had to expand that, would be pushing our police force really thin. We'd have to hire more police officers to cover their area.
Three million dollars worth more?
I don't have the, I'm just saying that's the reason why they do it. I'm not saying that the figures are one of the others. What I'm saying, that's justifies why they put in town of Groton.
That is my point. Those are my reasons for
Okay.
objecting either a zero cut or reducing services. But I don't think that well, I guess, to your point, how much of the, the three million accounts for your police budget?
The two point nine that we're asking for is half of our budget.
Okay.
Our total budget is six, so that's minus your, the town's half is minus my salary. Half the budget, my plus minus my salary.
Half the budget minus your salary. And so have you come to this number based on like taxable property or number of residents, or has the number determined? And are you just going for half?
Just half.
Just going fifty percent. Is there a way we could prorate it to the citizens? Your population?
Well, I guess my question is, will we then prorate the taxes that are paid to the town that come out of District Two and District Three? District Two and District Three, the city of Groton, is several things. We are a borough, we're a political subdivision, and we're a fire district. These are fire district taxes that are paying for this. The city, if you live anywhere between the Thames River and the Mystic River, you pay town taxes. The city of Groton pays town taxes. Specifically, if you look at District Two and District Three, we pay twenty-nine percent of the tax base. In this particular case, the police is two percent of the overall budget. And this is a loaded budget, which includes everything, including our departmentals. When you look at the town's budget, the chief of sorrow is going to present later on, that is no N M budget. That is an operational and maintenance budget. It is not a loaded. And I would be willing to bet that his fully loaded budget, burdened budget is much more than the budget that he is going to present later tonight. So you gotta take all that into account.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, you know, going back somewhere along the line, the decision was made to do this. In nineteen oh three, when the city became the borough, and in nineteen sixty-four, when the city became the city, what I think should have happened is the umbilical should have been cut then, and whoever survived, survived, and whoever didn't, didn't. However, that did not happen, and we are where we are. Traditionally, for over, even before nineteen sixty-four, these services, half of the services were being provided. And so it is a tradition. It is a tradition. You're right. There is no document that says that you have to provide that, such as a special act of nineteen oh three, nineteen sixty-four, and amended in nineteen seventy-seven for roads and highways. However, should the town decide suddenly that they're not going to fund this anymore? The only avenue that I would have to seek a remedy is a lawsuit. And none of us want to do that. None of us want to be in a protracted lawsuit.
Okay, so I really do appreciate the opportunity to speak and have this conversation, learned a lot in the short amount of time. If you could, I know this item will have to come up again in front of the full RTM. Could we look into that prorating based on population? Just half seems, it just just half because half, right? Or half because of tradition. I, and I'm, I'm in favor of that, even if it means it goes up from two point nine million, right? I think it, if, what I've learned now, all of it, I would like to appropriately see you guys get your dollars back, right? That only makes sense.
You do realize that the city of Groton taxpayers are paying thirty percent of this half.
Sure. And I think my question still stands, but I could probably do the math drill somehow myself. Either way, I appreciate the committee's time.
If you'd like to move on, anybody else?
So what? Thank you, Mister Chair. I'd just like to say thank you to you, Chief Jenkins, the mayor, and our Chief Financial Officer, Yu Haas, for coming out with a appropriate budget for city residents, as the mayor said. You know, there's thirty percent tax burden coming from these two districts. There's roughly about a third of the population that comes from the town of Groton that live in the city. We have extremely unique needs, socioeconomic issues, got a huge industry, so I think it's very appropriate to have a city of Groton police department and for the town to pay their adequate share to police that area. Just to be clear, I am a resident of the city of Groton, and by no means have I heard from any of my residents saying that they want to change the way the budget process works. I've only heard about two people from the city that actually said that, so I am in full support of this budget item. I would have liked to see a social worker in here, and I know that they were members of the town council that tried to push that forward, and unfortunately, it failed. But next year, I hope that we can have that in the budget. Thank you.
Representative Thomas?
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, just, just to be clear.
Didn't he yield his time?
Yes. Yes.
To, he's speaking again. I'll allow him to speak again. Okay, you can, I, I'm allowing you.
There's not a time or turn limit in the committee.
Yeah, I know. So that's why I'm saying, that's why. So your question is?
Thank you. Um, no, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, I'm not advocating one way or the other on that. I just, you know, seeking clarity and, and, you know, a little more just explanation on the relationship, and, you know, that thirty percent figure is significant, and you know, I think just between the city and the town, there's, you know, a lot of things that are done traditionally, and there's a lot of things that are, you know, a matter of documentation. So, you know, I think it's just important to have these conversations from time to time to kind of explore the relationship and make sure that, you know, the constituents understand how we interconnect. So, I mean, there's, there's no disrespect. It's no, no slight on anybody or anything. It's just sort of, you know, general information discussion purposes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I see none. Take a vote on the figure of two million nine hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty. All those favorite, say aye. Raise your hand. Opposed? Okay. Cool. Staying. Point is abstaining?
Uh, yeah, I'll be abstaining on that. Thank you.
Abstaining, okay.
Thank you, Chairman Perrell. Thank you. Representatives, we'll see you at the RTM meeting.
Okay, next would be the Groton Long Point Police Budget. Count number one zero zero nine one oh on page one seventy-nine. The consulate, it's still safe, so seven one, five zero. Okay. I need a motion on the figure. I'll make a motion on the Groton Long Point Police Budget, three hundred and seventy-one thousand fifty dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Especially if you want to start up with a presentation.
How would you like us to proceed?
Just two percent presentation if you'd like, or?
My name's Amanda Gallagher. I'm the president of the Groton Long Point Association. I'll start by briefly reading the relevant excerpt of the letter submitted to the town and then turn over to Chief for more detail. The Groton Long Point Association respectfully submits this request for funding from the town of Groton for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Groton Long Point requests three hundred and seventy-one thousand fifty dollars for police division. The town of Groton is also responsible for providing the two subdivisions in Groton, the city of Groton and GLPA police protection for all of its Groton citizens. This has been accomplished through the town of Groton funding a portion of the city of Groton and GLPA police budgets. GLPA is requesting the town of Groton continue to fund fifty percent of the GLPA police budget, and therefore, we are submitting a request of three hundred and seventy-one thousand fifty dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. The police services provided in G L P are also a benefit to all citizens throughout Groton, since these services provide mutual aid and shared support in emergency situations and supplemental backup when necessary. The police, these police services, which are only funded at a cost of fifty percent from the town of Groton, are invaluable to protecting all of our Groton citizens.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Dave Knowles. For those who don't know me, I've been with the Groton Long Point Police Department for about, since twenty eighteen. Prior to that, I did thirty-one years in Stonington and a couple of years at Pfizer in private security. As for the Groton City, I'm presenting a fully loaded budget. There is no, there's nothing to hide. Everything that we, we provide to our officers and into Groton Long Point, into this town of Groton, is incorporated in my budget to include all maintenance, my vehicles, my building, wages, increases in wages, and the accountability bill, and so on and so forth. It's all built into this, this particular budget, as it has been in the past. My increase is just another twenty-nine thousand dollars to cover the increases in the costs to come to the figure that we, we present to you tonight. I have nothing, nothing more to hide, nothing more to show, other than the fact that it is fully loaded, and it will assist me with covering the increases in utilities and vehicles in, in wages. We're in a contractual year this year. We'd start a negotiations, so we, we do expect an increase there. Other than that, if you have any questions, please just, just ask.
I, I did want to clarify, as the city, we do not include chief salaries or benefits in the fifty percent. It's just the officers.
The operation.
And any questions? I see none. Take to a motion was made, it's seconded. I'm going to take a vote on three hundred and seventy-one thousand fifty dollars. Okay, all those in favor? If I was saying aye, raise your hand. Opposed? Of sten- of tensions? And that passes five to zero, zero. Thank you very much. Stay safe too. Okay, now public safety. To be on page one oh one. Mr. Chair, I believe this number was increased by twenty-one thousand. Yes. New number would be nine, three, five, three, nine, nine, two. Is that correct? That's not what I have. I have ten, two, two. Oh, sorry, eight, three, one. You're right.
Yeah.
Eight, three, one. Yes. Yeah, all right. I apologize. I just want to move that figure. I'll make a motion for city, town of Groton Police. Number, item number one, zero, two, four, for a number of ten million, two hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Second.
Okay, that figure was moved to second in the presentation?
Sure. Well, good evening, everybody. With me tonight, Captain James B. Captain B. in addition of handling a lot of emergency management duties and overseeing the dispatch center is, he gets the distinct honor and privilege of producing our budget. That's one of his tasks. I've also got Captain Greg McCarthy, who is in charge of both patrol and detectives, and Deputy Chief Gately, who's our professional standards and doing yeoman's work right now as we move towards accreditation for, for Kalia later this year. Captain B. also oversees our records division and takes care of all of a myriad of tasks associated with the operations of the department. You've heard it twice already, so I just, I feel compelled to address it, but we do budgeting different in the town. I didn't design this. I, I've heard the fully burdened budget. Our budget, I'm asked to present, is done the way the town does it. And some of our costs are, when it comes to certain personnel costs, healthcare, that sort of stuff, is within the human resources budget and fleet maintenance, that sort of stuff is within the, uh, the public works. This building that we're in right now, this is, as a previous public works director told me, he says, you're the tenant, I'm the landlord. So we don't own the buildings, we don't own the cars, but the town does, and it's just the way we do budgeting in the town. So what I'm presenting to you is a budget that, that handles primarily personnel and operations for the department and operations and maintenance budget. And we've asked, after the council meeting, which, which was, as indicated by Representative Onbwa, was increased by twenty-one thousand dollars, is ten million, two hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one. Here's some of the highlights that I just want to hit for you. We, we do have a personnel cost increase of over seven percent. Part of that is due, in fact, it's a good thing, our staffing is a hundred percent. We've, every position in the police department is filled currently. Now, we're anticipating possibly one retirement in the next six months. On the dispatch side of the thirteen authorized positions, we have eleven of them filled. If you watch the council meeting, I told them that we, we can only fill so many at a time with dispatchers because we have limited ability and capacity to train them, because it's a one-on-one training, and we only have so many trainers. And when one of them gets trained, we hire another one. We do anticipate hiring two more. Since that time, I was, I presented with a retirement letter, so I expect a, another retirement dispatch center. So one step forward, two steps back, we're trying to make sure that we get that where it needs to be. We did settle a contract with them. We're currently in negotiations with the police, uh, with the police officers. So that's where our staffing is right now. So we've, we've been working diligently to make sure we have quality officers, and we're proud of the officers that we've got, and we've got quality civilian staff. This also incorporates a second public safety community outreach specialist, what has commonly been referred to as a social worker. Lorena Clark, we hired her last April, so she's been on board for about a year. This would add a second person. I can tell you the workload is there. I get fortunate for her. She has a high percentage of work that's done with the underserved population, but also does a lot of follow-up for our officers that they don't need to do anymore. And quite frankly, some of that follow-up that I think for a long time, we've talked about wanting to do, following up with domestic violence survivors, people that are suffering from addiction, doing a myriad of tasks that she does on a daily basis, and some of which aren't even known to me. Occasionally, I'll hear about her bringing food to people, which happened last week. And it's a, it comes as a bit of a surprise, just the engagement that she's had. So I, I did have a conversation, as was alluded to, with Chief Jenkins. I, I made the comparison with our A C Os. If they want to utilize them, they can work directly for him. We haven't had that capacity yet because she's been in training, and she's just been kind of in our F T O period, if you will. And since it's a new, a new endeavor for us, and it was something talked about in the police accountability bill, it's been extremely useful, and I think my colleagues here from the police department can validate that. In fact, when, when I get our month or morning reports for all the activities that have happened over the last twenty-four hours or the previous shift, a lot of times you'll see a highlight on that, that'll say, attention, you know, Community Outreach Specialist Clark. And that's a clue to her that they're looking for follow-up on that. So, and it comes in a variety of matters. So that's one of those ways. And she does have reports. I do anticipate her reports, which we've gone through already. But, but some of it needs to be sanitized. We'll be at our next meeting for our, on May eighth, for our Public Safety or Community Police Meeting. So, so that's some of the highlights, some of the additional highlights. Just to, during F Y, or calendar years twenty-one and twenty-two, we did lose five civilians and fourteen sworn full-time employees through retirement and attrition. We've, we've replenished that to bring us up to the authorized staffing, at least on the police side. I, I do like to hi- highlight this, and I think my colleagues would highlight it as well. You know, we, there are increased costs associated with police accountability bill. And that's not a mystery to anybody in law enforcement. A lot of it's good, a lot of it's additional training. We do quarterly training. I've assigned an officer exclusively to do use of force and firearms training. But we've also worked with Post University out of Waterbury, where we deliver online training. So officers don't have to go somewhere. We still are members of the Law Enforcement Council. Some of our training is done there. And, and if you, again, watched the council meeting, there were some questions about that, maybe a, an indication of maybe even upping it more. But I did incorporate another forty-five thousand dollars into this budget for that training. That includes arrest and control, officer safety, legal updates, stuff that officers are required to know. And, and Deputy Chief Gately puts a lot of work into that, because in addition to all that stuff, I'll tell you, twice a month, we have policies promulgated within the police department on the first and fifteenth, updates and new policies that come out. All, all are legally reviewed, legally sufficient, reviewed by not just us internally, up to and including myself, sometimes our town attorney, but always the, the organization that we've contracted, which was David, David Logg, which is a, really a police-centered law firm here in Connecticut that works on policy development, and they've been partners with us in trying to get this accreditation process underway. And while I'm on that, come December, we are scheduled for Klia accreditation, which is a national, international accreditation. So that's long been a goal for this department, and we're working hard to, to achieve that in this, in this budget year. Some of the other things, just ancillary stuff, replacement costs over time. I, I'd like to make sure that I explain that to, even though we're fully staffed, not all of our personnel are fully functional. You know, we have people that take vacations or on leave for, for injuries, things of that nature. Of our forty-five patrol officers, right now, five of them are what I would call liabilities rather than assets, in the sense that three of them are in the field training programs, or they're not operating independently, they're not, they're not in a, in a patrol sector, they're not individuals in a car. They're working with another officer to achieve the training that they're required to become a fully certified officer. That entire process, from the time we give them, you know, their exam to be a police officer through hiring, through selection, up through the academy, and then through F T O is anywhere from a year to eighteen months, a year on a good, a good day. But it's really more like eighteen months before a person becomes a fully certified police officer. And then we have two officers currently in the police academy, scheduled to, one's going to graduate next month, and then the last one will graduate sometime in July. So those five officers are not fully mission capable. Same holds true on the dispatch side. We have two individuals of our eleven dispatchers right now that are in on-the-job training. Same thing goes. They're not, they're not sitting in a seat. If you went out to the dispatch center right now, it just happens that both of the trainees are in there right now with two trainers. So, you know, we schedule them with a, a, a training officer or a training dispatcher that works with them better part of nine months, and, and certainly for learning all the stuff and the nuances we have here, that, that is certainly reasonable. Moving on to our operations budget. We did see, there's a lot of stuff going on. I can go line by line if you'd like, or if, we did incorporate some, some of the higher price items, Kalia maintenance, forty-six hundred dollars. We're, I told you about Post University, which we're using that delivers online training. And many times, it's my intent that that prevents us from having to send an officer remotely on overtime during different hours or paying replace, eventually paying replacement costs. We use Power D M S, which is the tool we need to use in order to get accredited. Virtually every department has gone to that. It's a power, it's a document management system, which, instead of having a book like this with all our policies, an officer can pull out their cell phone, they can hit the app if they're out in the field, and they can open up what's our policy on motor vehicle accidents and watch it right through it. But there's an increase in that, because we've also incorporated a scheduling system into it, as well as the F T O program, where daily an officer has to have an evaluation from their trainer. So every day, when a person's on F T O, they get a full evaluation, and this is not done electronically. Also included in this is twenty-one thousand dollars for roadway cameras. You've probably seen them, many communities now, even here in Eastern Kentucky, throughout the state, use them. It's a tool for us to put a person, or to put a, put a device out in the field that doesn't capture any P I I, doesn't capture any individual information. But if there's a vehicle that's stolen in the town of Groton, we can enter it into that system, and we can, if it goes by one of those cameras, we'll get a hit on it. If there's a homicide in one of the surrounding towns, we can put it in that sys- system, and we can find a, a vehicle associated with that. This tool, it's been extremely useful. Captain B. has led that project. We've used it on a trial basis, and, and we want to move forward because we see the value in it, and it makes the residents of the town of Groton safer. And it's certainly a useful tool, and it's, and I'm confident that it's something that will all benefit from. Moving on, those, those are, those are the big ticket items that that are included in this budget. Again, a lot of this, you know, our, our budgets have gone up in the last couple of years. I'll be frank about it. Been benefited from the, the good graces of the Town Council and the R T M, providing what I think is adequate staffing for this department. But more importantly, we've also seen support from the R T M and the council to make sure our officers are trained the way they should be trained, to make sure not only that we comply with the minimum requirements of the standards of conduct for our officers, as well as the police accountability bill, but we should pass that. I don't believe achieving the minimum is a, is a, is anything that town of Groton is worthy of. With that, I'm certainly open any questions.
Okay. Anybody have a question? See none?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair, just real quick.
Sheriff Thomas?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the chief in the, in the department for all that they do, and definitely appreciate the, uh, the amount of effort, bringing on the community officer or the outreach specialist and and all the meticulous attention to the training. I'm not sure, I don't think, if, I don't know if it's going to be on our agenda tonight, or, or where we stand with it, but the this, this budget item right now that we're discussing does not include the emergency support vehicle. Is that correct?
It's a C. It's correct.
That's C I P, or is that?
Come up a little later.
All right. Great, thank you.
Any more questions? Uh, thank you, Chair. I just want to say that I'm in full support of this number on the floor. I want to compliment the town of Groton Police Department, especially you guys in the leadership team. You know, working in public safety for almost twenty years now, I, I understand how hard it is to keep good people. Turnover is something else. I mean, Representative Burrell and Adams, we were in a situation when we were on the R T M years ago where we were really short-staffed. And, you know, it says a lot to the leadership that we are keeping employees and we're retaining them. So again, I applaud you and the training that you guys are doing to, to keep our professional staff out on the roads. Thank you. Anybody else?
Can, can I add something, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
It has nothing to do with the budget, but I just think it's important because of some of the common, listen, we're collaborative agency, and I can say that in reverse for the other agencies in this town. We work well. I think a perfect example of that was, uh, God, I've lost time. Last Friday's Friday, go tomorrow. Where, you know, all hands on deck. All right. So I, I think it's important to say that, you know, regardless of the patch on our sleeve, what it says on the badge, it's the name tag, the sense of pride and the sense of, you know, duty that we all share as law enforcement officers, regardless of those patches and badges, we're going to do the best job we can. I said, I want to say this here, I said that to someone who called me over the weekend and printed an article, but we work collaboratively, and I think that's expected, not just here, but in every community in the state of Connecticut and beyond, that we should work collaboratively, that it should not be sharp elbows, and it should not be a zero-sum game when it comes to law enforcement. It needs to be, do the work that you're asked to be done, to do. Do it effectively and do it efficiently, and that's what we try to do, and I think same could be said of our other agencies.
There's no other questions? I'd like to take a vote on the figure of ten million, two hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. All those in favor? Raise your hand and say aye. Opposed? No, or nay, whatever, yeah. Of stand tensions? Okay, I think you're.
I'm in favor. Sorry, I'd be in favor if you could show me.
Okay. Okay, that's, uh, passes.
Okay, that's, uh, passes five, zero, zero. Up next is CIP seven F on page two thirty-eight. Squad car body cams.
Uh, this.
This is a, I need a, uh, moved, moved a bigger. Give us the, uh, the updated number, please. Sixty-six, still sixty-six thousand. I got forty-four. Oh, sorry, forty-four. Yes, yeah. I'll make a motion for, uh, CIP item seven F for forty-four thousand dollars.
Sure, uh, this is, um, this goes back to, I, I sound like a broken record every year. The police accountability bill, this is a requirement. This was for our body cameras and squad cam, squad car cameras. We've had body cameras, the first round to have body cameras since twenty seventeen. We took advantage of a grant at the time. That grant no longer exists here in the state of Connecticut for, for, there's discussions about maybe trying to do something different in the future, but, um, we had body cameras, we had some legacy squad car cameras that quite frankly became obsolete and were no longer used with the police accountability bill. We had to then incorporate into every patrol car, uh, squad or vehicle cameras. Uh, we've done that. So this is sustaining that. We've already made the purchase. There, there's sustainment money for that. So five-year CIP and that's to, to, to fund this. So we've got a contract with that company. A five-year contract with Axon that it's, you know, it's this company, it's these body cameras, it's the squad car cameras, it's the tasers, it's the software. We don't, we don't post any, we don't have any computer hard drives here. We do it as a cloud. Some of the, what other stuff does it have on it, Jay?
Well, I mean, just the ability to store evidence or in the body camera footage for officers, uh, is, is a tremendous.
Software.
This, yeah, redaction, I, I. The ability to auto translate, this stuff is all included in, so.
We, when, uh, we have, we have software that goes along with it for redaction. I testified at the legislature a couple of times this year. One, a couple of times this year, but one of the things I had to testify on was about the, um, uh, FOIA, we do get a lot of FOIAs for body worn camera footage and for dash cam footage. It takes a lot of, we've, our, uh, a, a police support specialist spends an ex- exorbitant amount of time responding to those and downloading this stuff. You have to do redaction. So it does incorporate some of that, but it doesn't eliminate the need for a human being to do it either. So that's what this is. It's, it's something that we, it's a sustainment. It's, uh, the continuation of the CIP that was in, approved last year.
Okay. Any questions? Representative Thomas?
Uh, yes, um, in regards to the body cams, um, well, actually I'm, I'm in full favor of this, uh, this, of the CIP, um, but, uh, what your last comment there, chief, uh, about the, um, the FOIA requests and um, the costs associated with the, uh, where do we stand with that now? Uh, what the, what's the current town policy? Do you just normally, uh, just, is it overtime?
I, I don't understand your question.
Um, how is it funded now to, uh, do like retrieval and redaction and all that?
We, we have a person that does it. That's our, that, that's one of the many duties of our, uh, police support specialists. It's one of our civilian, incumbent civilian positions.
And that funding comes out of the police budget right now?
Yes, yeah, it's one of our, it's one of our civilian personnel.
Alright, um, you don't have any other, the line item that is attached to that?
Order, please. Mr. Chair, yes, the focus, uh, of this budget item is the CIP for squad body cams. Yeah, we just voted on ten twenty-four. So if that question were to be asked, we should have asked it in the last budget item. Yeah.
That's fair. I mean, just maybe just consider this a point of information was, uh, you know, it's not going to impact my vote here. I was just curious to know.
Okay. Alright, any more questions? Okay, I think a vote on the figure for CIP seven F, forty-four thousand dollars. All those in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? Yeah, passes five, zero, zero. Okay, next up we have CIP seven J, fire EMS radio control station installation.
Uh, this.
I'd like to make a motion for, uh, seven J, fire EMS radio control station installation for a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Motion made in second, okay.
Yeah, I jumped, jumped the gun a little bit there. Sorry about that. Uh, this, you know, I, I like to differentiate things. This is part of the public safety umbrella. Um, Captain B can speak to this as well, but, but long and short of it is the fire service in the, in the town of Groton that we support through the dispatch center. Uh, the multitude of fire departments have, the, the, the Groton Fire Officers Association has come to the decision that they're going to move forward with the enhanced radio system. It's the same radio system that we are on, that we've been on since twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, something like, it's, yes, it's this, the, in the, in the, uh, the RTM and the council both supported that, um, moving from our legacy system onto a new radios. It's the state radio system. It's managed by state entities. It's a robust eight hundred megahertz system. Uh, multi-band, many, many communities, many municipalities across the state of Connecticut have gone to this system. I'm proud to say through the efforts of Captain B and a couple of others, we were the first, we were the first municipality to get on this, this police department was the first. Stonington and, and our department were working close hand in hand. We beat them to the punch. We got our, got our ducks in a row before they did, but they, 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 credit where credit is due, they, they started working on this. So now fire services are looking to go on this. The Groton Fire Association applied for a grant, um, the fire, it, in, in Admiral Lautering, who's the fire chief in Groton, uh, Long Point talked about this at council meeting, but basically they got a grant that helps them buy the equipment for the fire service. But what it doesn't buy is the stuff, the widgets we need here. Whatever those are, Captain B can tell you what those are because he's more technically savvy with that stuff than I am. But basically it's to take our radio system now and be able to, to, to broadcast for them. So it doesn't, while I'm, I'm presenting it as the police chief, it's a public safety thing for the fire service.
Correct. So essentially, so you're going to still have, once our departments in the town migrate onto the state radio system, there are still mutual aid responders out there that do not have the capability of the state radio system. So this, what we're looking to install will bridge the old and the new together. So mutually, fire rappers from Ledger, from North Stonington. Um, you know, we'll even say New London at this point because they're not quite on the system yet either, or Waterford will have the ability to communicate with our fire department and vice versa. Now we will have the ability to communicate with them all on one radio system. The, the, the point of the project too is in the future, as other entities migrate onto the state system, we will see a savings down the road.
Okay.
We will be able to phase out some of our current radio equipment that we have to pay yearly maintenance contracts on.
So this is for the dispatch center?
This is for the fire service, but for the dispatch.
But I'm saying, yeah, the, the hundred and ten thousand dollars is put to real quick in the dispatch center. I know it's for fire service. Correct, radios in there. Okay, because I always talk to.
Not in the fire trucks.
Yesterday, but this.
Yeah, not in the fire trucks, um, but it's exclusively to get those things to.
Okay, yeah, I got it. I understand. Just wanted to clarify. Any more questions? If not, take a vote on, uh, the CIP seven J at a hundred and ten thousand dollars. All those in favorites, aye, raise your hand. Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that passes five, zero, zero. Next up is, uh, here with the seven K, seven K. Uh, police evidence processing command vehicle. Make a motion for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, Mr. Chair, this represents the reduction that was brought to the town council. Okay, uh, wanted to make a visit, presentation on this.
It, it forgive me, I didn't, I don't know why I didn't bring my pictures with me this time, but, uh, we have long had a need for some type of utility vehicle. Call it a command vehicle, call it an evidence processing vehicle, whatever you want, uh, to, to call that. The town of Groton doesn't have it. We had one, we had a similar vehicle when I first arrived here as chief. It was a nineteen seventies era panel van that was a utility vehicle used for a lot of stuff. Honestly, it, uh, outlived its useful life and I, I decided to depart with that piece of equipment because it, it was no longer serviceable and it quite frankly was no longer safe. Um, but it was used extensively for many years. I, I'm of, uh, the understanding, talking to some of my predecessors like Chief Miness there. There was another vehicle that the department had for some time, a, a command post type vehicle. And here's what it's used for. It can be used for a lot of things, but I, I, the perfect example is what happened last Friday and myself, Captain McCarthy. Uh, fortunately for Captain B and Deputy Chief Gately, they, they weren't around that day. They, they had re-approved, uh, he was on a different assignment and the deputy was, uh, was on his, uh, well-earned vacation. But Captain McCarthy and I, uh, responded to that incident along with our colleagues from Groton City, the state police, the, the fire, the Groton City Fire Department, aquatic bridge, you name it, everybody and anybody was there. Um, it, I, I had the privilege of similar type vehicles as a commander in my, in the state police where, where there was an incident that took place any time of the year. You live in New England, so you never know what it is, but it was a command post for you to operate out of. And, and, um, I did, during the course of that, communicate with town manager. I said, this is, this is the reason why we wanted something like this. As we're operating outside, trying to establish a command post for a critical incident where there's been one death, the major artery between Miami, Florida and Maine is shut down in our town. I ninety-five runs from Maine to, to Miami, Florida, uh, national attention. Uh, this would have been an ideal situation for, we didn't have that. We were standing out there on the pavement, uh, trying to muster people together uh, in a, in an assembly area for the incident commander, who was the deputy chief of the Groton City Fire Department. Were, were we to have this? And yes, they have fire apparatus, they have pumppers, they have all kinds of stuff, but this is something where you work out of, where you can carry equipment, you can carry evidence processing stuff. So if our, our detectives go to a crime scene, they can have it all there. If there's a fatal accident and they need to conduct an investigation, all their equipment's there. We're not shuttling it back and forth. Um, last year, we're across the street at Fitch High School in six-degree weather handing out masks and, and, um, uh, test kits to folks and, and had, we're operating outside. And so having a vehicle, and I'm not looking for something that is so gargantuan and the, if you remember the movie Stripes, we're not looking for that. We're not looking for an armored vehicle. We are looking for essentially what is, um, the kind of a UPS truck or, or Sprinter van, if you will, that has a workstation in it that has a docking station where one of our mobile data terminals can come out of a cruiser, can plug it in there. Getting back to the incident the other day, one of the fire chiefs had indicated to a dispatcher, because we're doing an after accident incident report, um, had indicated it would have been good to have a dispatcher down there. And I agree, it probably would have. But my response to the dispatcher was, you'd have been standing right there on the pavement with me, doing, not, not keep, not able to do the things that would have that we would have wanted you to do there because you didn't have the ability to communicate on a radio unless it was the portable in my hand. You didn't have the ability to be at a workstation, to get on our CAD to find out where all the units are at that scene. And maybe allow some of the folks here back at the dispatch center to do the other things, because when one critical incident happens, all the rest of the stuff till, still goes on. We are still responding for services to the extent that we can. So not only did you have this critical incident, but we had major arteries throughout southeastern Connecticut shut down. And trying to manage a scene like that, and, and these guys did yoga work, by the way. I got to compliment our dispatchers and all the first responders because they're, they're first responders too. But there's still other stuff. There's people asking, there's, there's fender bender accidents because people are stuck in traffic. There's, there's all kinds of other calls that are coming in. And if you can take that person out of that and put the command post with me or the Groton City Police Chief or the fire chief to have a, a mobile post to work out of. It, it's key. And I can tell you, I, and I said it at the council meeting, which preceded this incident, I had the benefit of doing that. And this is not something that we replace every year. This is going to be assist, if, if, you know, the, the RTM has it and it's good graces to provide this funding, it will be something that will benefit this community for years to come. Uh, when I was the state police major crime commander, the van that we had there was a nineteen ninety-seven and I believe it was retired last year or the year after. Um, you know, I, I had the ability to use these a critical incidents and throughout the state of Connecticut, uh, in it. It, it's just the way you do business. If you, if you get online, you'll find it, um. But anyway, it, it, it would, the, the funding that we initially asked for was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It was cut, uh, to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, we would, we would welcome that money. We would do what we can to find something that was suitable um, and try and find other ways to maybe put something together. The question that always comes up, what about grants? There are, there have been grants in the past. Those grants have, have, are not what they were. Um, uh, the closest community that has a similar vehicle is the city of Norwich. We did use that, by the way, a number of years ago for, um, downtown Mystic, when we had, I can't remember if it was the Mystic Irish Parade or if it was the art festival, one of those, but we had that down there. Again, summer months, you got officers and public safety officials going in and out of hot weather, you know, a, a staging ground for them to go in. You know, catch a snack or a break, grab water that, that, you know, get out of the heat because they're air conditioned, um. But we utilize theirs, uh, they did receive theirs on a grant, probably it's probably pushing twenty years ago, post nine eleven, when money was flowing for stuff like this, where you could get on the DHS website and they would give you money for just about anything. Those days are over. Um, you know, I don't like to see the town have to fund things that we can find funding for elsewhere, but we have tried. We've looked at, Captain B's combed through, you know, grants.gov. We've gone through all these different entities, tried what we could find. We asked for money onto ARPA for the same vehicle, um, that didn't make the cut then either. I, I think I've gone on enough.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions?
So, um, I, I was, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I just, um, is this reduction by the town councils appropriate for you to still go out and seek this type of vehicle, maybe gutted? We, we, initially and then possibly next CIP looking to outfit it properly?
So it's a double edged sword for me to answer that question because I don't want to say it's not enough. Because I, I do want this, yes, we will do something, whether we have to look at used vehicles or we can look at trying to find other, other funding sources or buy the vehicle and outfit it next year, you know? Ideally, it would be a, a turnkey operation, um. You know, I, I don't think anybody understood where I was going with this, but I talked about Captain B at the meeting. Captain B is very resourceful. He, he has saved this community a lot of money through his ability to bargain, I guess, is probably the best way or, um, in, in, these guys know what I'm talking about. He's, he's got a nickname that I won't share around here, but, um, but he's very good at that. If, if the, if, would I, did I, I wouldn't ask for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but I didn't think that's what we needed. But I don't want it to be an all or nothing type of thing. Oh, you didn't get that, so we're not going to give you anything and we go back to the drawing board. I would, I would welcome that. Would we try to initiate something and find something? Yes. Um, would it, would it maybe, would we have to recalibrate our expectations as to what that would contain? Maybe, and I think I said this to the council, maybe instead of an onboard generator, we have to go to a generator that we carry in it and then we go to a scene, it goes outside. It's a, it, you know, maybe in, in some of these have a an extending boom camera where you can see, maybe we don't get that. Maybe it's, maybe instead of getting the the luxury edition, we get the economy version. So.
Thank you. Hey, uh, Representative Thomas?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um. So, I'm reviewing a letter that John Burt sent out. He shared it a few days ago in the RTM email regarding, um, the RTM's ability to restore cuts to CIPs. Um, Mr. Chair, were you able to review that letter?
No, I did not. I had no chance of view that letter.
It's honestly, oh, um, the way I'm listening to this and, and, you know, thinking on, I mean, it seems like it'd be a frustrating situation to, 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 to be in, you know, where it's like there's an obvious, there's a need and, you know, but. It's like there's an obvious, there's a need and, you know, but to go halfway would, you know, and, you know, what, what does that really serve?
As far as I know, it's a two third majority vote at the RTM meeting to restore any money over what the council. Had submitted. Uh, other than the committee, I really don't know, I mean, it is just for a report I'm going to submit at the RTI meeting. So anybody wants to submit another figure. And we can take a vote, and I'm going to report on what the vote is.
I'd like to propose a, make an amended. Motion. Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, we have amended figure two hundred and fifty thousand by Representative Thomas, seconded by Representative Woz. Any discussion or discussion? And, and just to be. Okay, sure, yes, thank you, Mister Chair, just to be clear, if you happen to find some vehicle that falls below this. Benchmark that if you get this approval, then that money would go back into the capital reserve fund.
Yeah, absolutely, and then we do that now, I mean, and, and again, not going to tell you his nickname, but we've done that before with other projects that Captain B has. Been the steward of that we've come in under budget and, and under time, and I might also add, and I want to be. Kind of double down what I said, our, our mission is to be collaborative, this is not something that we would utilize exclusively, that it would be available to our partner agencies in the town. City, brought Long Point, they needed it, it's theirs, so it's all coming from the same pot of money, we would expect that. If they wanted to use it, there would be no hesitation, it would be at their full disposal.
I'm in full support of the amended number on the floor, and I hope when we get to the full RTM gathering that we. Garner the two thirds vote to restore this funding, okay. Moderator Rusk, got a question? Moderator Russ, you had your hand up.
Sorry, my apologies, again, I'm traveling, but I'm, was trying to find the email from John Bert, my. What I remember is that we are not allowed to restore cuts to CIP. But again, I'm trying to find the email and as soon as I find it, I will let you know, but I do not believe. That we have the authority to restore cuts to CIP.
Mister Chair?
Yes, Representative Thomas?
I, uh, just found in my email, it's. Under the subject line nineteen, forward nineteen twenty one CT special acts. Ground Long Point CIP cuts, that's the subject line, and it's an attachment. Which, if I'm clever enough, I'm going to try to send out.
I have the email here.
Yeah. Um, so. It, yeah, I mean, I don't know what we can do in the committee besides maybe just issue a recommendation.
But all we're going to do is issue a recommendation, so it's going to go in my report.
Yeah. If I could, just, you know, to, to further speak to the motion. You know, I just, you know, in my experience, you know, working in the maritime trades and then. You know, it, it's really difficult if you, if you've got a certain set of circumstances that you need to address. You know, and then, you know, to, to do a half measure usually ends up like satisfying nobody. Um, and. Not really addressing the, the, the problem at hand, and I do appreciate the chief's. You know, sentiments about, you know, being collaborative and, and, you know, the experience we have here in Groton is, we do see. The collaboration that occurs between Ground Long Point, the city of Groton and Groton Town Police, so. I, I think this, this vehicle would be. An incredible asset, and as we learned, you know, we saw exactly where it could have been used to great effect last week. You know, so, and I also think it could also be useful in just general community outreach, you know, the, you know, the same way that the fire department. Does the touch a truck events or the, you know, that, those sort of things, it could be a great way to just kind of, you know. Get the community, you know, involved and, you know. Bring, you know, the community and the police, you know, in close contact with each other in, in a positive way. Um, so, yeah, I would, I would be in favor of this, obviously.
Okay, moderator Russ?
Um, thank you, so I did find the email and I did a quick text to John Bert. We are not allowed as the RTM to restore CIPs that have been cut. Um, so while I support this, I. It's not something we can legally do.
We have done it in the past. About twenty years now, we have restored CIPs in the past.
The letter from the attorney is from twenty twenty.
Okay. And, and if you don't mind, I have it, and I'm just kind of scanning through. There, there, it summarizes by the town attorney that we conclude that the RTM does not have the authority. And then going through that text, it says, we do not believe that it can be said that an item proposed in the capital projects portion of the budget for. Construction or development is the equivalent of a department. And I think that's where they've, they've gotten their language and there's a whole bunch of other subsections along with it. I mean, I still support the two fifty and, I mean, we could, you know, debate that on the floor. And, and see where it goes from there, okay. Well. Because we are, we are funding this to a department, yeah, funding the police department, so. What I'm going to do right now is, I'm going to take a vote on the amended figure. Okay, this is just going to go on my report for the RTI meeting and then we can. Come up with the decision at the RTM or what figures we're going to vote on, just going to report on what we do in here on this committee meeting. So if there's any more questions. I'd like to take a vote on the first amended figure of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for capital proof in seven K. All those in favor, if I say an aye. Opposed? Abstentions? And that passes. Five, zero, zero. And I believe that I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. And second to adjourn, all those in favor, or we don't, the voter, I don't believe. See everybody there at the meeting, alright.
Thank you all, everybody.